Item number one is from the County Executive Office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding a coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19 update.
Good morning, Chair Hart, members of the board. I'd like to begin my update this week with a lot of thank you. So if I may, I'd like to thank my team at the Public Health Department. We're seven weeks into the response. We're not looking as fresh as we did on day one, but the energy's still there, the commitment's still there, we're still going strong. Secondly, I'd like to thank every county department. I can't imagine any department that hasn't sent staff to the Public Health Department or to the EOC. Thank you for contributing to this effort for the long hours. And lastly, I'd like to thank the CEO's office for their leadership, for their guidance, and for making resources available for us to respond. I think that this crisis has shown me that we are strong as a county because we work together, we collaborate together, and we partner together through the thick and thin. So, thank you.
And thank you, Dr. D'Orino, for all the work and energy and creativity that you're bringing to this effort on a daily basis. Appreciate you recognizing your staff and all the other county employees, too.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with our COVID-19 by the numbers here in Santa Barbara County. As of yesterday, we have 267 cases, and of those, 162 are active. On your right are cases by the area, with City of Santa Maria leading at 64, the Lompoc Federal Prison with 47, and that number has changed, City of Lompoc with 41, City of Santa Barbara 35, Community of Orchid 27, South County Unincorporated Area at 16, North County Unincorporated Areas at 15, unincorporated areas of Galleta Valley and Gaviota at 11, City of Galleta at 5, Santa Inez Valley at 5, and Community of Isla Vista at 1. Case status, we have, again, this is just a different way of looking at the numbers. So I'm going to be showing you graphs from using pies, using trends, just so that you can get a flavor of the numbers. So we have, this yellow line reflects the total number of cases as of yesterday at 267. And then you have this blue line right here, ending yesterday at 162. These are the 162 active cases. And the gray line following here, 105 are fully recovered. Yesterday, we had three new cases, and again, we've experienced two deaths during this pandemic here in our county. So as you recall, the number of people hospitalized is something that we're very mindful of, is something that we're watchful of, is something that we monitor on a daily basis. And here is a chart that describes the total number of people hospitalized since March 31st, and with ICU as a subset. So we are, we, there is really, we're leveling off, but that's only one day. So this is really premature, this is very, things are evolving, and the ICU is holding steady between 17 and 18s, and that is the orange line. This is another way of looking at the cases, recovery status. So the orange is the 39% of our cases recovered. The 43% describes our cases recovering at home, with the 14% the gray describing cases that are hospitalized. Age distribution of cases. So oftentimes, we have heard that the sentiment that this is something that's really affecting only older people, but as you can see in Santa Barbara County, we have a pretty good spread of cases throughout the age groups. We have the 40% orange group describes cases in their 50s to 69. The 35 purple segment describes people in their 30s to 49. So that's pretty sobering. Over the weekend, we were made aware of a model coming out of LA County, and this is a pretty, I think, good graphic that talks about the projected impact of physical distancing on spread. So the orange line, and this is something similar that I've described to you in previous briefings. So the orange line describes never, distancing hasn't begun. The red line describes stopping the physical distancing, with the blue line holding steady way down here as maintaining current level of social distancing, with the green line almost touching zero, describing what would it look like if more stringent physical distancing measures were to be put into place? So the takeaway for me here is the blow up of the center graph, where you see the divergence in the number of cases drastically increasing if we let go of social distancing. What this really means is, described in this graph, so this is a projection of infection in LA County if physical distancing was to one, reduced to pre-order level. So here in this model, it's anticipated that 96% of residents will be infected over the course of the pandemic by August 1st. However, if physical distancing is to be maintained at current levels, you see a more steady at about 30%. And if LA County were to increase above current levels, meaning putting into place more stringent, even more stringent measures, then they would experience about a 6%, 5.5, rounding up to 6% increase. So this is ultimate protection of vulnerable population as well as the healthcare infrastructure. So what are the takeaways? So I maintain that social distancing is working. The current Governor's Executive Order N 33-20, which was issued on March 19th, will be in effect until further notice. What that means is that our local government can put into place through health officer orders more restrictive measures, but we can't be less restrictive. Our local data, as we have been monitoring, suggests that physical distancing and public health directives have slowed down the spread of COVID-19. What we are modeling today looks so much different than just the model that I updated you three weeks ago. Reduction in physical distancing behavior may lead to rapid increases in cases and high demand for hospital services beyond our current capacity, as I showed you in the previous slide with LA County. Staying at home and physical distancing will allow our hospital system to maintain intact and to provide services to all who need that level of care. So that said, we are in continuous conversations with CDPH and discussing what the future might look like. So on Saturday, all of the jurisdictions were invited to be part of a conversation with CDPH, and we talked about when and how would the state or regional or local would lift the order, and what would that trigger look like? And if our assumptions from the get-go was to protect the vulnerable and strengthen the healthcare system, at what point do we loosen the reins? And what would that look like at the local level, at the regional level, and at the state level? So I share that with you to demonstrate that this is a difficult period in our history, in our county. Not only do we have to contain and mitigate COVID-19, but we also have to acknowledge the societal impacts. And so we're aware of that, and we are in constant conversation, not only with Sacramento, but with our regional partners as well. Coordinated response, again, wanted to remind our community that there is constant access to information. Our website has daily updates, and that is www-publichealthsc.org. As community members, as we struggle with the shelter-at-home, lack of essential services, lack of freedom and whatnot, we do have help available. So our Community Wellness Call Center emotional support number is 888-868-1649. As always, 211 is available 24/7 for any additional questions or support, and we are guided by CDC and CDPH in our response. That concludes my update for this week, and I am open for questions.
Thank you, Dr. D'Orino. It's very helpful information. Questions for staff? Supervisor Hartman?
Just a clarification, will there be press conferences? And if the public has questions, can they direct questions to the media, who can then ask them at the press conferences?
Yes. So our press conference is daily, but however, today's canceled, and we will resume tomorrow at 4:30.
Any other questions? Any questions for Santa Maria?
Yeah, I think there's a couple up here. You want to go first?
Sure, I just had two. First off, I was asked by a number of people about masks as far as when they are required when you're out in public. I know a couple of local grocers are requiring them. Is that individual businesses requiring them, or is that part of our county public health directive? And if it's not part of the directive, is that going to happen? Or just give me the status of where we are with masks in public.
Supervisor Levin, you know through the chair, so for restaurants, that face covering mandate is via our recently issued health officer order. The mask you're referring to, is that the mask that you are referring to?
No, I was more interested in grocery stores. So I know you have to wear one in a restaurant, but what about a grocery store?
The grocery stores isn't, right now, it is up to the grocery stores, but we are looking at expanding the need for other essential businesses to use face coverings. And it will be, if, when that time comes, it will be done through our health officer order in consultation with our county council.
Okay, thank you. One last question then, and I'm looking at Slide 4, which gives the hospitalizations and the ICUs. And I guess this is probably better news than we had anticipated as far as a flattening of what's, of how those numbers originally increased and then leveled out. What is the capacity, you know, when we talk about where that number is, what would that number have to get to before alternative care sites would be required? So what is the capacity of our local hospitals?
So it's roughly about 699. We had discussed a ramping up, even though while we are planning to stand up ACSs, we at 50% of that capacity would trigger us to speed up the standing up of those alternate care sites. So that's why we are monitoring the hospitalizations, the ICU, and the vent usage on a daily basis. And not only do we get that data from the hospital real time, but we are also validating those numbers via reports from CDPH.
Okay, great. So that's 700, basically 700 hospital beds, and then ICU's been basically staying static at 17, 16, 17, 18?
Correct.
So I'm assuming that that's also, we have the number for what that capacity looks like?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Levin. Supervisor Adam?
Thank you. Dr. D'Orino, so have you ever heard the term herd immunity?
Yes, I have.
Could you explain that for us, please?
Sure. Herd immunity, depending upon diseases, can be achieved through either vaccination, or it could be achieved when a certain number of the population has been exposed to that disease.
But what would that mean?
So if you are referencing COVID-19, it means that a certain number of our population would have been exposed to the virus over a period of time, thereby a certain population is immune, and that virus is transmitted at a lower pace?
Okay. I'm glad you've, I'm glad that you know about that now. I just have one other thing. There's a guy named Brian Goble that is going to get interviewed today by Bill McFadden on the NewsHawk website and their location there on Facebook, and he's a very smart guy that's been working on analysis of the data, and I think he's got some very encouraging observations and analysis that everybody should listen to and take what they can from that.
Yes. Our, thank you for that. I was made aware of that opportunity, so our team will be participating in that live interview and take the opportunity to learn more about his viewpoints.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing that I have noticed as the conversation in the community is evolving to what next, you know, you've described very well, you know, what we have been doing and how successful physical distancing has been, and how incredible the members of the public throughout the county and the state have been in responding to that. And, you know, I think it would be helpful for you to describe a little bit about the complexity of going from, you know, we are doing all of the personal hygiene, we are doing physical distancing, and then what would be required to begin to loosen up some of the social distancing? You know, I think what I've read is, you know, you need to be able to do robust testing of COVID.
Right.
And that sounds like something that should be relatively easy to do, but it hasn't been for a variety of reasons, not related to the county of Santa Barbara, related to the availability of testing at the national level, not just availability of testing, but if you take every piece of the testing process, there have been shortages of supplies, there have been shortages of nasal swabs, there's been shortages of reagents, there's been shortages of the actual files that are used to transport those tests to the labs. There are differences in the labs and the equipment that each of the labs uses, and so you can have a situation where you have extra capacity of one kind of machine that doesn't have capacity for another kind of machine. It'd be like trying to have, you know, a Ford steering wheel applied to a Chevy car. It doesn't, it doesn't work. That's just for the COVID-19 testing. There's been questions about the efficacy of some of the testing. There's a question about if you have had COVID-19, whether or not that actually does confer immunity in the future. There is a great deal of scientific research being done about using serontology to determine the antibodies. There are a wide range of medical views about the effectiveness of that information and what that means for future infections. There is a huge issue of how you would scale that to be applicable to local communities and using that as a tool. And so the reason I say all those things and ask you the question is, you know, it sounds relatively simple to say, you know, we're here and we need to get to there, but getting there is incredibly complex and a massive logistical challenge. And I think that is not clear at all to the public. And it would be helpful, I think, for you to take a little time to explain, you know, how complex that is.
Right. It is, it is as complex as you've described. I think that we all know that we need to get a handle on who's been infected, and we can only do that truly through testing. And only when we have tested, widespread testing, will we be able to quarantine, will we be able to do the contact tracing, and then self-isolate, and really hunker down and basically draw that box around the infections. However, that said, testing is complex. There are testing that are done by the Public Health Department, and that is where we get our ration from the state. And then testing can also be done by the hospitals, and they have their own platforms, as you mentioned, and it can be also done through a private medical group, physician's office, and they may choose any variety of the platforms to be tested. What I'm encouraged by is the conversations in Sacramento about the need for increased testing, and then also going down the path of serology testing, and that's the Stanford Task Force that I think a lot of us have heard about. And that is something that I heard a rumor that could be up and going as soon as two or three weeks. And so we're hoping that once that is made available, that we would be able to test a little bit more and see which members of our community has been exposed and may have that immunity. And on that immunity, as you mentioned, there's not, there's a wide variance of scientific literature. You see papers that say, once you have demonstrated that you've been exposed, you could be 60% immune. I read somewhere this morning that there's a paper out of Italy that says only 10%. So there's a wide variance. There's just, and I think that could be because we're so new into this. There's so many unknowns about the virus, about the mode of transmission, and about our immunity.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams, do you have a question?
Well, I'm very encouraged by you engaging in the conversations with California Department of Health, with public health, because it is, I think, important for us to be part of a state conversation of how we move forward, and how, once certain benchmarks are reached, that we could maintain a level of social distancing while lifting the stay-at-home order. It would take, obviously, a huge amount of thought, a huge amount of work, to give the proper guidance for businesses and society to be able to function. But I do think it's a thought exercise that it's really a part of our mission to engage in, because the longer the stay-at-home order stretches, the more difficult it will be for families that are operating without incomes to survive. And so I think it's part of, we need to be part of that conversation of how to move forward.
I was really encouraged on the call on Saturday with CDPH about how open they were to hearing from the 58 counties and the three cities about the local struggles and what we grapple with. So the information from the local jurisdictions, I think, will be very critical to guide Sacramento in the decision-making process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? Next, we'll go to public comments. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item?
Chair Hart, members of the board, we have three requests to speak by phone on this item. And we will go to our first caller, Anastasia Stone, to be followed by Lee Heller, and then Angela.
I just had some questions about what we're looking at and how the stay-at-home order is infecting people in our district in the mental health capacities, specifically how we looked at stats regarding suicides, admissions to mental health, and overdoses, as those can be huge triggers with people stuck at home, losing jobs, income, and various other things, especially with no end in sight. And I just wanted to thank Udos for talking about really getting back to things and having a conversation about it, because I believe that the kind of just no discussion about when we will get back to normal actually makes these mental health issues worse. I personally know someone who took their own life and was triggered by the continued stay-at-home order, and I know others through other friends.
Thank you for that, and we cheer your condolences for the loss of your friend. This is a very difficult time.
Chair Hart, members of the board, we will now go to Lee Heller, to be followed by Angela.
Chair Hart, members of the board, thank you for all the hard work you and the staff are doing. This has been an extraordinary experience, and I'm in such great admiration of how hard everyone is working seven days a week to try to protect our community. I want to reassert a warning not to leap on data that seems to warrant physical distancing prematurely. Mr. Goble has no experience in epidemiology, nor is distinguishing between different California communities. Broad conclusion of the curve that we are seeing in California. As we know, Santa Barbara is behind the curve of the larger cities. Our leak is not coming for a while yet, but when you take his analysis into account, consider the limitations of it. I think Dr. D'Orino's presentation may clear that just a small, vulnerable population, as one could wish, that vulnerability is just more widely than we had been led by Chinese data. So there's just no way to protect small group and let everything else go back to normal. I also want to let Dr., or Dr. D'Orino's comments about herd immunity. Herd immunity takes about 85% of the population having been exposed and protected, and we are nowhere near that yet. It's big from experience working for decades in the ant world. So as we move forward, I want to encourage, remember that, yes, economically, people are really devastated by these stay-at-home orders, but if, least and prematurely, the economy will crash again, pandemic roars back, and the very few people that are vulnerable now will be vulnerable again because they are already on the front lines of exposure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heller.
Chair Hart, members of the board, we will now go to our final speaker, and that is Angela. Angela.
Hi, I'm Chloe from Lompoc, and over the weekend, our city councilman Mosby did a video conference where he actually graphed out the individual curves by cities in Santa Barbara County. And while most of the cities seem to be flattening everywhere, they're not flattening in Lompoc. In fact, we're accelerating, and we're accelerating at almost the exact same rate as the federal prison. Lompoc Federal Prison has the worst cases of coronavirus, the second worst cases of coronavirus for all federal prisons in the county. What is the county planning to do about Lompoc? I didn't see them mentioned in the graphs at all, and I haven't seen anything about contacting the Bureau of Prisons. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that was our final speaker on this item.
Are there any other questions? Supervisor Williams?
Well, just because I think that's an important question, and we don't allow the public to ask questions during public comment, but supervisors can, so can just ask to understand what is going on at Lompoc Federal Prison, and what is our participation in it, and are you assured that they are taking the proper measures?
So, we have been in contact with the leadership at the Lompoc prison, and starting with their first case. And their cases are growing at a fairly rapid pace, and we are concerned. The Public Health Department, supported by the Unified Command at the EOC, we have a four-track effort. So, the first track is working with the Lompoc leadership to be able to get Sacramento to send down a self-contained hospital unit that comes with the beds, the equipment, the resources, and the personnel. So, that's our first track. The second track is being available through our Lompoc Healthcare Center, being available to test any of the staff who wants to be tested, so that we can, we can see what's going on. And the third track, and I have lost my, the third track, okay.
I think we'll have plenty of opportunities to put out the third track.
I'm drawing a blank. I apologize. But regardless, we are, oh, I'm sorry, the third track is disease containment, of course, and so, we are hand-in-hand, working with the prison leadership about how they are containing the spread of COVID-19 within their prison. So, those three tracks are led by very seasoned members of my team, and now that we are supported by the Unified Command, we are in conversations with the state, and we also are coordinating our lobbying, our advocacy for increased resources, critical timing, with the hospital CEOs, as well as our local, state, and federally elected officials. We actually, today, we have two calls with the prison leadership.
And then, just the previous person's question, I mean, are we tracking, or is behavioral wellness, or some nonprofit tracking the increase of society, suicidal ideology, is I believe the term, or, and, and specific cases, and other behavioral wellness problems that have arisen from the?
That's a great point. I think that there are, in addition to the health impacts, there are other impacts of COVID-19. I will be working with my colleagues in behavioral wellness to get that data, as well as with the sheriff and the DA's offices to coordinate data about domestic violence, about child abuse, and as well as with unemployment. So, those are the four major indicators that the state is also worried about, and so, we were highly encouraged on Saturday to start looking at those impacts as well in our reporting.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions in Santa Maria, comments?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Don Arinoso, for your presentation. It's been very helpful. I know the public, everyone is very interested in knowing the most recent information, and this has been very helpful. We'll have another press conference tomorrow afternoon at 4:30, where we continue to, you know, answer any questions members of the media have, and try to explain this very complicated subject. You know, I think this is one of the most challenging things, certainly in my lifetime, communicating complex science, and maybe even more difficult, the complex logistics involved in responding to this crisis. You know, I think people intuitively imagine that, you know, there are things in warehouses that can just come to a community and be deployed, and be ready to go, and get us where, you know, we would imagine we need to be, and that has not proven to be the case. And we, in spite of that, we have been able to get the public to understand the stakes involved in this, and more importantly, to act in a really incredibly powerful way to change the rate of infection in our community and throughout the state, and that is inspiring in an awesome way, you know, to understand that we could communicate to 40 million people in the state of California to all do the right thing, and the vast, vast majority comply and achieve that, and avoid what would have been potentially catastrophic, and that has not happened in other countries and in other places around our country, unfortunately. And so, now, it gets more complicated and more complex as to what to do next. And it's really encouraging to hear that those conversations are happening at the state level, they're happening, you know, with your colleagues around Southern California, it's happening, you know, here in our county as well, but there isn't a simple answer about, you know, when can people go back to work? That depends on our ability at the national level to have the testing capability, to make sure that we understand how many people have the virus. That is that fundamental, basic question that needs to be answered to get to the next questions is not known at this point. And all of these things are hard for folks to understand, and I, it's hard for me to understand, and I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way. And we're doing the best we can on a daily basis, working really hard, and I think the public understands that and appreciates that, and is willing to do the best they can to cooperate together and address this issue. So, thank you for the information, and we will have more tomorrow.
Thank you.
Supervisor Williams?
You know, I was inspired by what you just said, to just say, one of my observations is how powerful this proves collective action really is by this flattening of the curve that those graphs would indicate we, as a community, have been successful in doing, is only started by government. It's not actually executed by government. We don't have, fortunately, in this society, we do not have the coercive power, enough coercive power in government to actually force you to do this, right? People are staying at home because they have chosen to stay at home, because they have chosen to adhere to the stay-at-home order. And to me, that's a tremendously powerful testament to people, people's ability to collectively act in the community's benefit, because they are collectively acting in the community's benefit, even though, in many cases, it is causing them to lose their job or lose their business. They are still taking that strong community action, and that has saved lives. So, to me, that should be a real cause of, that it's inspirational, that it doesn't take the coercive power of government to do that, as in other countries. It takes us acting collectively for the public good to accomplish that.
Thank you, Supervisor Williams. I'll now entertain a motion that we have A, B, and C receiving and filing, and the SEQA, the standard SEQA Declaration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Adam?
Here.
Mr. Levinino?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Chair Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you again for the presentation.